Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of July 9, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Patron?
Here.
Councilmember Hickman?
[laughing]
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the City Council Finance Committee minutes of May 16, 2019, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of June 25, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes. So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. By show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number four, a proclamation, 1920-1, proclaiming the month of July 2019 as Waters Worth It Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. And I'm going to read the proclamation. I'm excited that my first one is Waters Worth It. ... of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of July 2019 as Waters Worth It Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Waters Worth It Month is being promoted by the Environmental Control Advisory Board to help increase community awareness of Norman's most precious natural resource; and whereas Waters Worth It is a campaign by the Water Environment Federation to help answer questions about how our actions, attitudes, and the things we most value are closely connected with water; and whereas Waters Worth It Month is one of the many ways to help promote the protection of Norman's water by increasing educational efforts, by including booths at various functions and locations, information in newspapers, and literature showing citizens how to conserve and protect water; and whereas Waters Worth our respect, communities are built on water; and whereas Waters Worth our effort, clean water is everyone's responsibility; and whereas Waters Worth our health, water is life; and whereas Waters Worth our future, dealing with an aging infrastructure; and whereas Waters Worth our passion, as we find solutions for the 21st century; and whereas the protection and conservation of Norman's water improves the quality of life by having a cleaner and more abundant supply of water now and in the future, and reduces the cost of waste and wastewater treatment. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 as Waters Worth It Month, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to become knowledgeable and acquaint themselves with the problems involved in maintaining safe water. I believe Amanda Nairn will be accepting this proclamation. There you go. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mayor Clark and Council. This is the first time I've stood in front of some of you, so welcome. This is our eighth year for this proclamation. We were the very first city in the country to bring this proclamation forward, and now we're the longest, obviously, because we've been doing it for eight years. So, we're very proud of this work. We're very proud of this city and their dedication to water. Tonight alone, I don't know if you've noticed, but you have ten items on your agenda, including this one, that have to do with water. I mean, that's really cool, and I'm including the Beaver Agenda item, too. But that's really cool. Most notably, your Agenda item that's most exciting for us tonight is the approval of a hazardous waste facility. Believe it or not, that directly affects our waterways. That's huge for the city of Norman. I thank you for that. The other thing is, in 2011, I was up here talking about water because we were in a terrible drought. Things change every year, and the idea behind this proclamation is it kind of means something different every year. This year, we aren't necessarily short on water, but we always know that it's always important. So, thank you for this, and thank you for approving all your Agenda items regarding water tonight.
And thank you for your service with ECAB, Amanda. Now, we'll move on to item number five, the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine Agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 31, with the exception of item 19, which is withdrawn by staff, on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Item 19 is not withdrawn. All those in favor, raise your right hand for acknowledging that. Item 19 is not withdrawn. Okay, opposed, same sign. That was unanimous.
Right, no, I'm not opposing.
It's all right. First time up here. Item number six, ordinance 1920-3, upon first reading, implementing amendments to the Center City Form-Based Code (CCFBC) incorporated by reference in Chapter 22 to replace, supplement, or correct language throughout the CCFBC to resolve inconsistencies or inaccuracies, including the introduction, Part II, Part III, Part IV, Part V, and Part VIII; to amend references to building form standards in Section 303 within Part III; to amend and supplement general provisions and the building from form standards in Part IV; to amend requirements in Part VI; to amend and supplement uses identified in Part VII, including the addition of a special use for dwelling units with four or more bedrooms to Section 704; to amend and add definitions to Part VIII; to add Part IX; and to make other language alterations as necessitated by or consistent with these amendments in declaring an emergency. Item number seven, submission of payment of Oklahoma Municipal League dues for FYE 2020 in the amount of $65,000. The next six items are annual material purchases for the water treatment facility, bid 1819-65 for ferric sulfate, bid 1819-67 for anidrous ammonia, bid 1819-69 for well services, bid 1819-70 for quicklime, bid 1819-71 for salt for the water treatment facility, bid 1819-72 for the purchase of hydrogen peroxide for the water treatment facility. Item 14, consideration of Norman Utilities Authority bid and contract with Myers Dirtworks LLC to haul residuals for the water treatment plant. Item number 15, contract with Central Contracting Services Incorporated in the amount of $131,185 in associated bonds for the FYE 2019 Acre Street Sidewalk Project and a resolution granting tax-exempt status. Item 16, authorization to purchase a security access control system from Convergent Technologies in the amount of $77,486.15 utilizing state contract SW1048C to be installed at the city of Norman Transfer Station. Item 17, authorization of purchase of one pumper-tanker fire truck from Pierce Manufacturing through Conrad Fire Equipment in the amount of $681,699.23 utilizing the Houston-Galveston area contract. Item 18, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Turkey Valley Estates with a variance in the minimum width for a private road from 20 feet to 12 feet and acceptance of easements. Item 19, acceptance of a donation of two Pyro Eco Counter sensors valued at $1,200 each to be used by the Traffic Division for the collection of bicycle pedestrian counts from the University of Oklahoma Gibbs College of Architecture. Item 20, acceptance of certified local government grants in the amount of $16,767 to be used for the development and support of local historic programs, approval of a contract with the Oklahoma Historical Society, State Historic Preservation Office, and adoption of a resolution appropriating funds. Item 21 is a contract, 1920-1, with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Services, in the amount of $12,500 for the annual financial work plan for control of aquatic rodents effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Item 22, contract 1920-9, with the Board of Cleveland County Commissioners, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, for a cooperative inter-local agreement for the maintenance, construction, and repair of section line roads within the city of Norman from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Item 23, contract 1920-10 with Infrastructure Management Services, Inc., IMS, in an amount not to exceed $100,620 to develop a pavement management program for the city of Norman through June 30, 2020. Item 24, contract 1920-11 with the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department and the Board of County Commissioners of Cleveland County to provide for the incarceration of city prisoners in the Cleveland County Jail facility at a cost of $48.63 per day per prisoner to begin July 1, 2019. Item 25, contract 1920-15 with studio architecture in the amount of $206,700 to provide design, bidding, construction administration, and as-built services for the sanitation truck wash, the sanitation container maintenance, and the household hazardous waste facilities. Item 26, contract 1920-16 with Bethesda Incorporated in the amount of $25,000 for acquisition of property located at 1700 North Porter Avenue. Item 27, contract 1920-17 with Metropolitan Fair Housing Council Incorporated in the amount of $25,000 as agreed upon under the 45th Year Community Development Block Grant Program and the FYE 2020 Home Investment Partnership Program. Item 28, contract 1920-18 with Norman Affordable Housing Corporation in the amount of $100,000 for acquisition of property to be utilized as affordable housing. Item 29, contract 1920-21 with American Ramp Company in the amount of $900,000 for the Andrews Park Skate Park Construction Project and associated bonds. Item 30, contract 1920-25 with Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District concurring in the financing for the Dell City Aqueduct Replacement Project. Item 31, resolution 1920-4 establishing the 911 Emergency Telephone Fee Rate for Calendar Year 2020. I need a motion to approve or reject the Consent Docket. So moved.
Second.
I would like to recognize the Director of Parks and Recreation, Judd Foster, to make a presentation on item 29.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 29, get things loose here, is a contract K1920-21 with the American Ramp Company. It's a Norman Ford project, as you mentioned, for the Andrews Skate Park project. The original project built at Andrews Park was constructed in 2001 by the American Ramp Company. It was named after Blake Baldwin, who was a local skater and park advocate. And then, after his death, his family worked to raise funding to help build the original park and has stayed involved with us ever since. And then, it is a street course type of facility, meaning it has steel ramps and obstacles that are attached to a concrete slab above grade. At some point after, a few years after it was constructed, we worked with the Norman Arts Council to, and volunteers, that they had to do graffiti-style art paint on the ramps. And then, since then, the artists have repainted them two or three different times and helped us touch them up and keep the paint maintained. These are some images of the original ramps after they were painted at the northeast corner of Andrews Park, and you can see the metal structures above grade. In 2018, they were relocated. The Course to Norman Ford project calls for a new park, a new skate park at Andrews Park, and also, there was a realignment of James Garner, a part of James Garner Avenue, at the intersection of Acres and James Garner, in association with the Central Library Project. And so, that realignment displaced the original skate park. So we brought ARC back and dismantled, or disassembled, the existing ramps, and then reassembled them in smaller skate spots at three of our neighborhood parks, Colonial Commons, Atkins Crossing, and Oak Tree South Parks. This is an image of the, a few of the pieces that were relocated to Oak Tree South Park and repainted. They've been received very well at those three locations and have been very successful. This is an image of the Andrews Park site before the realignment, and the light blue shade is the Hundred Year Flood Plain as it exists today. The darker blue is the floodway. And then, up here in the northeast part of the park is the original location of the skate park and the small parking facility that was associated with it. Of course, those are now gone and have been replaced by the realignment of James Garner. This rectangle to the south of that is the old underground water storage tank. This is the roof of that structure. This will be removed as part of this project, and this is generally the location of the new skate park project. We anticipate, too, that it will go a little further south, down into the Hundred Year Flood Plain here, which is okay, because if we do, what we anticipate building is a below-ground or below-grade, concrete bowl-type skate park facility. Anything below-grade in the Hundred Year Flood Plain is going to be allowable. So, this is the type of facility we're looking at. This contract is a National Joint Powers Alliance contract, which is nationally bid procurement contract, allowing government agencies to secure best pricing on a variety of goods and services. These contracts are awarded on three-year terms with fixed pricing during that time that include all the necessary warranties and liability and insurance items. The contract amount is $900,000. That provides for a turnkey service, including all the input sessions, design development, construction documents, and all the labor materials and construction needed to complete the project. In addition to that, we'll bring a separate contract from a local civil engineering firm that will provide the survey data we need, geotechnical reports, and drainage utility connection information. ARC is going to work with our staff and the local skaters to develop the final design based on public input sessions. That will determine all the various components that go into this project, and then, our staff will manage and coordinate the demolition of the existing storage tank and the selection of the engineering firm. And we expect construction to be ready to go this fall, and if weather allows, to be completed the summer of 2020. So with that, we're excited to start another Norman Ford project, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I know several of us up here know skaters, and since Norman Ford passed, I've had skaters in the community that have asked me about this project and when it's going to get underway. And I've, you know, you and I have talked about it several times, and several of them have just asked when their opportunity for input would happen. I see it on here. I'm not sure, maybe you might provide some information that we can share with people we know in the public about when those opportunities will be? Because I, like I said, I do know several people that have been waiting anxiously to give their opinion about what they'd like to see.
Sure, I appreciate that. The, I don't have an exact date, but once the contract is approved, we'll begin immediately. And so, I would say, probably within the next three or four weeks, we would be setting up input meetings, local meetings, and start that process. We'll begin, they're ready to go, and we're ready to start. That'll be the first part of the process.
And the second question I had, I don't know if you, I haven't spoken to her in a while, but Blake Baldwin's mother, when I had talked to her before, she had indicated she would prefer that the new skate park retain the name. I mean, I would, I would like to see that as well, if possible.
Right, we'd like to do that, yes.
Unless there's some other ideas. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember Wilson?
I guess my question is sort of similar, maybe kind of answered it, but is there a, an association, or, I know that skaters can be kind of a rogue crew, so, I don't know, how do you gather them together for input?
I'm not sure if there's a formal association or group. What we have done is to, is gone to the park and just talked to the people that are there, and they help us spread the word. And we posted signs and said there's going to be a, you know, an input meeting at this location at a certain date and time, and they've responded to it.
So you don't go get on the skateboard and like hang out with them?
I do not.
Okay.
But, the other thing, too, of course, we use social media and all of that to get the word out as well.
Councilmember Scott?
Just to clarify what Councilmember Holman said, you all know my husband, Kalen, I think, but you all know him, so we all know a skater, at least. He's a big-time skater and very, very excited, and not rogue. He's an engineer. And many skaters get a reputation for being rogue or troublemakers, but really, skating keeps these kids out of trouble. They oftentimes keep kids and adolescents out of troublesome areas. They go to skate to find, you know, they may be outcasts, they go and they find a community, in the skate community. So it's really awesome to have, to see that we're making movements on this, because the skate park, the central skate park is missing, and so the skaters are kind of all across town, and they're missing that sense of community that they had previously. So I'm excited. I'm a little biased, obviously, because my husband skates, and I don't. I film him, and I'm really good at that. That's all. Do you skate?
Sarita's a rogue.
Okay. All right. I'm excited to have another Norman Ford project come together and move forward. So, thank you for your work on that, and keep us posted on when we're going to have this meeting, and I'm sure all of us will help communicate that.
Will do.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Are there any other comments from Council regarding any other item on the Consent Docket? Councilmember Patron?
Yeah, so I just had a question about bid number eight and 11, so I'm not sure who to ask to come up here about the water chemicals.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Anthony Miski, I'm the Utilities Director.
Well, thank you for coming. So I have a question about the huge price increases on these two different chemicals. So I was wondering if you could explain that a little bit, like why, why the price on this stuff went up so much?
Well, specifically, the first one you mentioned, the ferric sulfate, we were surprised at that, too. And so we just went back to the manufacturer. Let me back up. So these are all chemicals that we use throughout the year at our water treatment plant. And every year, we go and we rebid these from different suppliers. We call up the suppliers that have purchased, that we have purchased from in the past, and in addition, we send out our bid sheets to like a clearinghouse that sends it out to other chemical suppliers. So everybody gets to bid on it. We do not list the suppliers that send in no bid. So, in this things, we just send in the ones that bid. So this one came in higher than it was last year significantly, and we questioned it, and they just said that it had to do with the purchase of iron ore and the transportation. A couple of them mentioned transportation costs, and this facility was reinvesting in its facility to expand, and so essentially, everybody gets to pay for that. But even though this was a significant higher cost, it still was lower than the next lowest bidder. So, that's where we're, that's where.
So, did we budget amply for that?
Yes, we believe so. We've added some, this is, some of these chemicals be new to us, the sodium hypochlor- no, the sodium, the hydrogen peroxide and the salt. We never bought that before, because this year, when the plant is finished, we'll be making our own chlorine, and we use salt to do that. And so, that's new for us, and the hydrogen peroxide's new for us. So we're excited about our new treatment plant. We'll have an open house when everything's up and done, but we'll be treating our water differently. We'll be using ozone, we'll be using UV. So it's really an exciting time for us. We're happy about that.
Okay, great. And then, the number 11, so that first one, the ferric, excuse me, ferric sulfate was a 44% increase in, the lime bid was a little over 20% increase? And so, I'm assuming kind of the same situation?
It was the same situation, where, again, we don't like increases. Some of them were, one of them was like a 2% increase, we're happy with that type of stuff. But it's just kind of, as it comes, you send out bids, you hope you get the best bids you have, and it's sent out to a clearinghouse, so everybody has an opportunity to bid on it. And even though this was a 20% increase, it's still significantly lower than the next, the next lowest price.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments from Council regarding the items on the Consent Agenda? Councilmember Holman?
Just going to comment about item number 24 real quick. I meant to email staff before the meeting and ask what the total numbers were for this past year, but I didn't get a chance to. But I just want to, you know, highlight how much it costs per day when we have to arrest somebody and put them in jail in the city of Norman. Almost $50 per day, per person, in a city of 125,000 people, that can be a significant amount. So I think we always need to be conscious of that and the laws that we make. And I'm very excited that this past year, the City Council voted to eliminate arrest and jail time for possession of marijuana, and I think that will help significantly to reduce this number, perhaps. But just something I want to make sure everybody is aware of, it's very expensive to arrest people, especially for minor offenses. Also, if staff, I think Anthony maybe, if we could get the numbers on what it cost the city this past year to incarcerate, based on that 48.63 per day, thank you very much.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Two comments, one about 17, and it's just a petty comment, really, but whoever came up with the figure of 63 cents didn't have to make change, and the people at records at the police department are really upset about that number. The thing I'd really like to talk about, however, is number 17, the purchase of the pumper-tanker. This is a twin to a unit just put into service at Station 6. And this one, when it's delivered, will go to Station 5 and result in the relocation of some assets from there. The benefit of all of this is it's consistent with Chief King's plan of water east, ladders west, which has direct ramifications for insurance rates. And so this is a really, really big deal, out of public safety funds, but a really big deal and part of his overall plan. I commend you for that plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I just want to piggyback on that. Thank you, Chief King, for thinking of us out there, and Ward 5, where we need those pumbers. So I appreciate that purchase.
Councilmember Carter?
I have a question about item 21. Is that the contract to relocate aquatic rodents?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works, we manage that particular item. Councilmember Carter?
So I don't know, is that, what is the, what are our specific problems with aquatic rodents?
Well, sure, and I've got our street superintendent here tonight, if you want to get into more details. We manage this through our street department, our street division, but you'll notice in the staff report here, we've been doing this for many, many years, contracting with the Department of Agriculture, US Department of Agriculture, for, basically, this is the control of aquatic rodents or beavers. We, last year, for instance, we got over 40 calls from neighborhoods or areas where we're seeing problems in channels. This is really designed to keep our streams and channels, and particularly, our stormwater systems flowing like they're supposed to, and beavers don't always let us do that, frankly. So, we are not trained to do this kind of remediation. We go to the experts at USDA, and as we get those calls throughout the year, if you approve this tonight, we then have a resource that we can call immediately. They're here within a day, usually, and they canvass the situation, they do what they've got to do to move the beavers in an appropriate way, and our problems go away. But it, we usually run out of money, frankly. We get more requests than we have resources. But this, this contract has remained at the same But this, this contract has remained at this same amount for several years. And it, it sort of gets us through each of the years.
So for all the beaver lovers out there, they are trapped and relocated?
They, they are trapped according to USDA standards, yes. And in every appropriate way. I'm not an expert, but I, that's why we hire them to do this work. They are the experts and they, they do it the way that it's supposed to be done in the most humane fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council regarding any other items on the consent docket? Okay, so I'm going to read this disclosure because you know that I work at the University of Oklahoma. And item 19 deals with a donation from the University of Oklahoma College of Architecture. The City of Norman Ethics Ordinance directs councilmembers to recuse on items in which they have an actual conflict of interest or a pecuniary interest, or to disclose a possible conflict of interest on a particular item to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest. I have consulted with the city attorney's office on this matter. And while I do not have a pecuniary interest, that may vary with the outcome of council's decision on this item. It is possible that a conflict of interest could be perceived due to my employment by the University of Oklahoma. At this time, I want to affirmatively state that I intend to cast my vote on this item, but I will not incur a benefit, detriment, or other pecuniary interest regardless of my vote on this item regarding the donation of the censors. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket is unanimous.
That brings us to the items off of consent. The main item we will discuss tonight is an executive session, so we'll begin with council comments. I want to announce that while we will be recording miscellaneous comments, I will be shortening comments to three minutes in the interest of expediting our meetings. And that will be a new policy going forward. However, if you go over your three minutes, I will be happy to stick around along with the council member that you might need to talk with you further. Let's begin with city council comments. Kate, you want to, or councilmember Beerman, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. So for the last few meetings, I've been kind of talking about some of the policy research I've been doing on a variety of topics. And this, this meeting is no different. I have been listening to a podcast called This Land. And for those of you who might have been following the Supreme Court case of Patrick Murphy, he's a Muskogee Creek enrolled citizen. And he was convicted of a murder, which he readily confessed to. And the state decided that even though Congress may have intended to disestablish the tribal land up in that area, there's a lot of question about whether or not Congress actually did that. So this podcast is done by Rebecca Nagel, who is a Cherokee enrolled member. And this could potentially be the most important treaty rights case in a generation or more. Yeah, the court is expected to rule next term. They actually pushed it off for the remainder of this term on whether or not the 1866 reservation boundaries for the Muskogee, Cherokee, Chickasaw, Choctaw, and Seminole nations were ever formally disestablished. And this is important to note that the 3 million acres that comprise that territory includes most of Tulsa. So why is this germane? For a number of reasons. One, we have tribal land here in the city of Norman. And the state of Oklahoma has also spent $600,000 of our taxpayer money to defend their handling of the case. Instead of remanding this over to the tribal courts, they decided to try him and convict him themselves. And so this is an issue for a number of reasons, not the least of which is tribal sovereignty. We have tribes and tribal land in our community. But also the fact that at the state and federal level, laws have been bent to chip away at tribal rights. This is not a new problem. And additionally, the marginalization and disrespect of tribes and tribal land. So this podcast has been fascinating. It's taught me a lot that I did not already know. And it could potentially have longstanding implications on tribal rights and tribal sovereignty, which is not just an issue in the state, but it could be a future issue here in Norman, particularly as it comes to water rights. We talked a lot about water today and water is an issue that is only going to be more and more critical as we start to run out of it. So it's been really, really interesting. I've learned so much and it's made me want to look more not only into this issue, but how these tribal lands were established in the first place. So, you know, you can find inspiration and influence for local decisions in any number of places. And this is just one that has really sparked my interest recently. So, thank you, guys. Oh, also, happy birthday, Sarita. Her birthday's on Wednesday. So happy birthday, Sarita.
I'm not normally a commenter, but I feel like I'm going to explain myself a little bit for this economic development incentive that was proposed by the county and why I'm so opposed to that. And so I basically feel like the money that would be in the hands of a bureaucrat would be better spit in the hands of the public. That's a much better economic development tool than I believe handing out favors would be, which is what the track record of economic development incentives has been in Norman to date, in my opinion. And so, but, but we do have very real needs of our city. As everyone knows, cart was thrown in our lap. And we, we welcome that challenge. I'm excited by that challenge. I feel like public transportation has got an expansive horizon to it. And we can do a lot of things with it and it's going to need funding. But, but to dole out economic development money, hand economic development money to a closed group of bureaucrats is just not someplace I'm going to go. And I would, I would risk that funding for public transportation and be in favor of returning that money to the people before I would be for using it for economic incentives. Thank you.
All right. This is exciting. So first of all, I want to echo, I'm listening to that podcast as well, This Land, and it's fabulous. I definitely suggest it. And, okay, so I also want to incorporate by reference for my time here on council that I took a pledge for the Norman Citizens for Racial Justice. And I just want to let them know that I have not forgotten. And so I'm taking this opportunity right now to say that I remember and I'm incorporating it immediately. So I want to thank councilmember Castleberry. I didn't get a chance last week. We moved kind of quickly. And so I just, first and foremost, want to thank him for his time serving our ward. And I look forward to remaining friends with him and giving him a shout out when I've got questions. And so I just wanted to go ahead and add that tonight. And then finally, and I've talked to Mayor Clark about this, I would like to take an opportunity to have, perhaps reopen, amend the charter review committees, their, what would you say, assignment? Because I wasn't here at that time. And I have a few things that I would like to add to it as well. So, and as well, there are, Ward Three representative is not able to sit on that committee. So I was hoping that my fellow council members would be open to the idea of amending that ordinance and allowing me to add a few more questions to it. So with that, I think the appropriate way to do that is to make a motion to reopen, to amend that.
That is on the agenda for the 23rd. I emailed you about that. We're still working out all of our emails up here, so that's why I jumped in. But this is, it was a great opportunity to let your councilmember colleagues know what your intentions were, and I completely agree. So that will be, we will have the opportunity to amend that resolution and add the person.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. So I think that's it. I look forward to not being as nervous up here and seeing all of your pretty faces.
Little Axe Volunteer Fire Department could use your donations of water, bottled water, and Gatorade. So if you would like to drop those off at a location in town, Annie's Rough House would happily take those out to them. Or you can drop it off at the Little Axe Community Center. Welcome new councilmembers to our, our fun, fun Tuesday night situation. And I maybe have a member that I've, of the charter review committee that can't do their duties. So that would be an opportunity to, anyways, that's all I have for tonight.
I'd like to thank my fellow councilmembers, particularly the old heads, for making me feel very welcome and beginning the education process that I must endure. I thank particularly Mayor Clark, large shoes that I'm going to find difficult to fill, but I'm going to try. I want to thank Mary and Brenda and Ellen, too, for beginning the orientation process for me. But they've got a schedule that's not going to allow me to sleep for the next two weeks. I've, I've got a lot to learn and I know that. And so I'm open to listening. I look forward to this. I look forward to future meetings and a more constructive involvement from me, from this dais on the critical issues facing the city.
As was mentioned, we kind of ran out of time last week, so I want to take a moment to, to thank Mayor Miller and councilmember Castleberry. Councilmember Castleberry was the longest-serving member of the council. With him leaving, I now am. And so, you know, that means that my entire time on the council, the last six years I've worked with him. And Mayor Miller and I were elected the same night back in April of 2013. Her and, and I and councilmember Hyple at the time, we all three ran against and defeated three incumbents, which I don't think, as far as we know, had not happened in any recent history in Norman that three incumbents lost. And so, you know, Mayor Miller and I had a pretty unique and strong connection, being elected at the same time, getting to see her get elected mayor as well while I was up here. And I would just, for a little bit of historical reference, in my, now, starting my seventh year on the council, I've worked with 21 different councilmembers and three mayors. I've worked with two councilmembers from Ward One, four from Ward Two, two from Ward Three, two from Ward Four, three from Ward Five, six, or four from Ward Six, and four from Ward Eight. So the people on either side of me have changed out quite a bit over the years. So I'm looking for maybe a little stability up here. So, but that's a lot of people to work with over the years, over some really complex issues. I'm really thankful to have had the opportunity and privilege to sit up here and get reelected by the citizens of Norman and Ward Seven to continue doing this job. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of responsibility. But there's a lot of reward in it as well when you vote for policy and you see it enacted in a positive way. And you see a building constructed, like the new library or the Westwood Pool, and you see it finished and you see your name on the plaque up there. And then you see everybody enjoying it and waiting in line to get into the pool. And you know you had a, a significant role in making that happen. It's pretty rewarding and, in my opinion, makes up for some of the very difficult things we have to deal with. So I appreciate councilmember Castleberry and Mayor Miller for their service to Norman. It's greatly appreciated, especially from someone that grew up here. So I'm looking forward to the new council we have and tackling all these big issues that we have to deal with. So thank you all for being here and we'll see you next time.
All right. I, I do want to apologize for, just kidding. God, I was going to apologize for messing up comments. And what did I go into?
Mess up my comments?
Sorry, Councilmember Scott. Please continue.
I forgive you. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Clark. And I'll forgive you. Everybody gets a pass on their first night as mayor.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Leading. So very grateful for everybody who I've served with in the past year. We just are, I just hit my year mark serving Ward Eight. And it's very nice sitting next to the treasure chest of Norman City Council knowledge. Brenda is another one of those as well. She's the keeper of the keys, is what I like to call her. We'd be lost without her. So welcome to councilmember Patron and councilmember Scanlon. Hope you guys have enjoyed your, this is so easy compared to my first night on council. It was ridiculous last year when I took office. I don't know if you guys remember, but it was uncomfortable for me. And so this is really nice. You guys really got lucky going for probably not so much. So for Ward Eight news, we have a ward meeting coming up at the end of the month. That'll be July 28th at our usual time, 1:30 to 3:00 PM at Fire Station Seven. I will be emailing some staff members and asking them to come speak to the ward at that time about the progress that we've made on the MOU, the UMP TIF, and the Norman Ford Project. Because I have received at least one email from a constituent who's confused about how the projects are working. So we will be discussing that, as well as the sales tax that we were discussing in study session before, and how Ward Eight would like to see that money, that 8% sales tax allocated or redirected into our general fund. So I'm interested to get feedback from my constituents on that. And I think that's it. I was on vacation the past four days and it was amazing. I didn't have, or I didn't have cell service and I miss, I miss that. That's all.
All right. I'm going to talk now. So first of all, I want to apologize for the script the last time. There may have been a comments part, there may not have been. Sorry about that. Won't happen again. So, but welcome to councilmember Scanlon and Patron. And I want to also thank Mayor Miller and councilmember Castleberry for their service. And as always, thanks staff for our wonderful job. A few announcements to make. Norman Conquest is this Saturday in the good old Ward Six. I actually, Facebook memory popped up and it was the first time I did Norman Conquest with not a great bike and it looked like I was dying. So if you're looking for something hilarious to brighten your day, go back on the Bria Clark Facebook page. You'll laugh and I will be embarrassed. But it's a wonderful event. It starts Friday night. There's a, with your registration, a dinner at O'Connell's. It comes with, I think, a drink ticket. And the, the Saturday, the race starts at 7:00 AM because it is July in Oklahoma. I do the town tour because I am not a cyclist and it's really fun to have a police escort to ride around Norman in ways that you normally couldn't. So I encourage all of my colleagues to go if you're able. It's, it's a great time. I will be there. I know that registration is still open and for the town tour, it's $20, unless you want a shirt, then it's $40. But it's a great event and they'll have free snow cones and free lunch and all sorts of things. And all of the proceeds benefit the J.D. McCarty Center. So something I think we can all get behind. Friday is Art Walk, another glorious day. There will be a candlelight vigil at Stash that I'm excited to support. There's also with Parks and Recreation Month, if you like scavenger hunts, which I assume some of you do, Goose Chase. Look it up. I've posted information about it. It's this really fun scavenger hunt where you get points for doing different challenges. And they've been very creative in how they set it up. You can do an activity at this park. You can attend this community event. And it really highlights all of the work that our Parks and Recreation Department does to provide those opportunities for our residents. And the best part is it's completely free. So we have my kids and even my, my son's grandma, we have a little team that we're out enjoying this wonderful scavenger hunt. So Goose Chase, check that out. And then next weekend, not this upcoming one, the weekend after, it's the citywide sidewalk sale. So if you are looking for a reason to spend your money and support small business, here it is. All the districts all around Norman are participating. It's a great collaboration between the city of Norman, Visit Norman, all the districts, the Chamber of Commerce. I'm really excited to support those small businesses right here in our community. That's all I have for tonight. And so as we go into miscellaneous discussion, I'd like to highlight that this is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
Are you doing good?
She's city staff.
You have less than three minutes.
Oh, I hail from Garfield Avenue, 1400. My mother and father gave me the name Evan Alexander, done, some time ago. God, you all look so good up there. Can I get a panorama of you all? You all could maximize, you all could increase miscellaneous comment to 20 minutes and I still wouldn't have enough time.
I completely agree with that statement.
Can you give me like a? Can you give me like a 15 second ending? Look how good they look. Look at them. First night. Let me get staff in here, too.
I love it. I want to see this picture.
You're all stars.
That's right, all of us stars.
You're all you human beings, you residents of Norman. Who care about city government? Everybody watching, I see you. There's a lot of serious stuff going on, obviously. I don't even know what to say. There's just too much. There really isn't. Isn't enough time. How much time do I have?
Minute twenty-seven.
Okay, no, I've got time to get something out. Raising funds, selling bonds to the residents of Norman and only them. We got problems. These are the issues. You want to take, be a part of the solution? Here it is. You invest in your city. Farmer's Market, Tuesday night now. Pretty new changeup, just FYI for anyone. The idea of farmer's markets at libraries, I still love that idea. The confusion about big, important issues. That projector is working. I think that we could set up some night of the week in which city chambers are just open. All the doors are locked and everything. But there's a police officer. There's a fireman. And there's interspecies cohabitation between firemen and police officers. Interspecies cohabitation.
10 seconds.
Okay, I thought that would have gotten a little bit more of a laugh. I thought so. Anyways, there's, that's, that's some of what I think is.
And I appreciated your joke. And I will see you in two weeks, sir. If not before, I would be lucky.
Yes, and if any of you all want to talk with me.
Okay. Right, okay. Not messing around. Okay. Any other miscellaneous comments?
Three brothers to, to take a degree at OU.
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, John Priestley Jr. My mailing address is, is over at 3844 Cedar Ridge on the West Side, kind of close to where our old family home was that my brother signed over to his attorney outright. My oldest brother, Patrick. I had a, a memory card stick that was not going to be ready for tonight. But I did happen to have a more tactile thing that is a docket from court. I've talked to the Norman Police about embezzlement. But actually, it wasn't embezzlement. My brothers, I had taken care of my dad for better part of a decade, helping him maintain his sense of independence, his perception of independence. And I've, I've had emails from the Norman Police who say, oh, this is a civil matter. It's a civil matter. But in fact, there's things, there's things that are being hidden. They say, oh, well, you know, this is Lancaster, Aaron Lancaster. Chris Amundson is on the CC line. Brady, Brady Neal was originally, you know, anywhere, anywhere you get, go to, they say, oh, this is a civil matter. But in fact, my oldest brother, Patrick, he was the original trustee of the trust. And for some reason, I guess my dad had his own reasons, but he was, he was kind of a butt head. And so my dad switched him.
Sir, you have just a few seconds left.
Okay, anyway.
I'm happy to stick. We're, we're done. I'll make sure, stick around afterwards and I'll come chat with you. Thank you. Any other miscellaneous comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, excuse me, Item 33. Consideration of adjourning into an executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes Title 25, Section 307b4 in order to discuss pending litigation associated with Matthew Casey Holcomb versus William Hickman in his official capacity as Ward Four Councilman in the City of Norman Cleveland County Court, Case Number CB 2019-276. I will entertain a motion to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session.
So moved.
So I have, okay. The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session. By show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. There's one opposed. Okay, council members, you may move to the study session.